I will call the order, the Monday, May 1st, 2017, meeting of the North Reading School Committee. And as usual, we'll start with public input. If you have anybody in the audience that has anything that is not on our agenda, this is the time to bring it up. All right, let me see, no hands raised, so we're going on to the next item on our agenda, which is student report. Michael Tyrell, class of 2019, is with us tonight. Michael?
Good evening, I'm Michael Tyrell. I'm a sophomore here. I've spoken to the school committee a few times. Spring sports this year are following a successful trend, characteristic of North Reading in recent years. Girls softball remains undefeated with a record of eight to zero, so they have eight wins, zero losses. Thanks for their brand-new field. And on Sunday, North Reading High School hosted the Division Four State Relay Meet. In this event, our boys and girls teams won the Division Four relays, and another student representative, Jensen Kadavaitam, you may have heard from him before, broke two school records.
Did he, really?
Yes.
Which one?
He broke the SMR, which is short, median relay, and he broke the pole vault.
Really?
So, great for him. In addition, the girls tennis team continues to have another successful season. Again, we were able to have this incredible athletic success due to our new facilities, such as the relatively new track, which was a few years back, the tennis courts and the softball field, which is brand-new this season. Our student council has also been very active. Last Friday, they hosted Kids' Night Out, in which over 100 young children from the community were allowed to play and have fun in the high school gyms, of course, under the supervision of a few student council members, for the evening. This upcoming Sunday, May 7th, a portion of our student council will be walking through Boston as a part for the Walk for Hunger. This is a short walk hosted by Project Bread, of which student council will walk 10 miles to bring awareness to the issue of hunger in local communities. Elections for student council members and class officers, such as class president, will occur the week of May 22nd, with signup and signature forms being released on May 8th. So, those elections are a lot sooner than you may seem. Senior class officers have also begun to sell prom tickets. On Monday, June 5th, senior prom will take place at the Burlington Marriott. Despite the end of the school year rapidly approaching, there are still numerous academic matters. On May 15th, student recognition awards will take place at the High School Performing Arts Center at an invite-only ceremony. Here, teachers will present an award to a student from each subject, recognizing academic achievement, teamwork, and other character traits that support the high school's core values of citizenship, leadership through service, and lifelong learning. Lastly, AP tests have begun, and I can tell you, they're really not fun in the slightest. Spending 8:00 AM to 11:30 taking a test is not how you want to start a Monday, or any day of the week, really. In conclusion, I, on behalf of the rest of the student representatives and the student body, would like to thank Mr. Bowers for his excellent years of service on the school committee.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you very much.
Can I go now?
I also have a...
You're off duty.
I have a piece of student work here, which was a research paper I wrote about World War II for my history class, and it has a rubric here. You don't have to read through the whole thing, it's pretty long, but I just will pass that around if you'd like to look at that. And that really helped us demonstrate, you know, helped us learn how to gather lots of research from various sources, as well as to articulate it well in a piece of, in a paper that really arguments, that argues our thesis and talks about that.
Any questions for Michael? Go ahead, Jerry.
Michael, good job. Excellent. Was that your first time you reported?
I've reported a few times before.
A few times, okay. But I just wanted to follow up on what you said. We hosted the Division Four relays here on Sunday, and it was an absolute beehive of activity, and it's kind of a, an honor to be able to host this. I think it's about, probably the third time we've done it. But the new fields came into play. I mean, we had the new discuss area that we just finished.
Yes.
The javelin was done, I think, on the new purpose field.
Correct.
Track. The reason we do so well in the pole vault is there are towns that don't have those types of facilities, and we have the opportunity to train our kids on those facilities. The boys absolutely dominated the meet. I think they won by 30 points, and the girls did almost as well. So, not only did we host them, but we won, you know, both boys and girls titles. So, again, I just wanted to highlight that.
And it's not just athletics, the fields and the, you know, different facilities are excellent to, you know, promote our athletics, but we also have, you know, all these new facilities in the school to promote, you know, technology learning, performing arts. I mean, everything is just so brand-new. It's so much better, and amplifies all learning experience and athletic experiences.
No doubt about it.
It reminds me of the old saying, "Build it, and they will come."
As my daughter says, geez, Dad, you waited until I graduated to build the new school. I hear that probably once a month.
Good, well, thank you very much.
I can get that to you tomorrow if you want.
I think we'll go on and go with our agenda a little out of order. We'll take up new business next, and go on to our vote on the fiscal 2018 budget.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Connolly starts with the, kind of the nuts and bolts of the presentation, I want to take a moment to just extend some appreciation to folks that have been integrally involved with the development of the fiscal year 2018 budget. It has been not so much untypical of other years in terms of the length of the budget development process, but I do think we faced this year, I would say, some kind of lengthening challenges where we were really working diligently with a lot of folks to, to kind of bring about a presentation for you tonight, which is a balanced budget for what we're labeling as level services. So, I do want to just acknowledge certainly the members of the school committee, all of you, and Mr. Webster, who is not here tonight, for the support that you've given to the administrative staff in the budget development, and particularly the time that you spend at the workshops to really, to work with us, roll up your sleeves, do the hard work, and also, I think, I think Michael would agree, I know Michael would agree, that we feel a great, a great deal of respect from all of you for supporting our ideas, and I appreciate that more than I could convey to you in just a few words tonight. And similarly, we work very collaboratively with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee representatives, to the finance planning team. We presented to the Finance Committee just last Wednesday, the budget update, and, you know, that finance planning team is also just a very good, dedicated, hard-working group of people that I think, you know, are very understanding of the challenges that we face presently, and as we look to the future, and does do all that they can do in order to help us support our best work. The town administrator, Michael Gilberto, and the town finance director, Liz Rourke, serve as members of the finance planning team, they too. You know, we have a very good working relationship with the two of them, Michael and I do, and we speak particularly around this time of year extensively with them, regularly with them, to try and, you know, kind of convince them, not that it takes an awful lot of convincing, but to articulate, I think, where, where we want the school district to go, and they are very, very supportive and work very hard with us as well. The last, the last folks I want to thank are the staff, the administrative council, the students, faculty, all of our staff, that I do try to do my best to communicate with them the status of the budget development process as it's ongoing. In fact, I'll be sending out a third communication tomorrow, following this meeting tonight. And I appreciate what they, what they do in terms of supporting the mission of this district. They play a very integral role, no matter what the job is, to really help us do our very best work on behalf of the students of the district. And then lastly, I would just acknowledge certainly, probably most importantly, are the citizens of the town, the taxpayers of the community, that have demonstrated, I think, year after year, their strong support of public education in this town. I often say that this school, this campus, middle school, high school campus is, is a testament, I think, to the dedication of the taxpayers of this town and their support for public education. So, a lot of people are involved in a, in a months-long budget development process, and I felt it was important to just articulate to all of them and to all of you my appreciation for that support. So, with that, we do have a brief presentation for you tonight that stems from the work of the two budget workshops that were held, one in March, one in April, as well as the public hearing and the feedback that we gathered from that hearing on April 10th, to present to you our recommended budget to be presented and hopefully ultimately adopted at the town meeting on June 5th. So, with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, I'll turn it over to Mr. Connolly.
Great, thank you, Mr. Menard. So, as Mr. Menard just stated, a lot has happened over the course of the last week with the school department budget. We've certainly been a busy week last week, as we had several meetings to try to work to bring the budget to a conclusion and certainly within balance. And I think that actually began with last Monday morning, we had a meeting with the finance planning team, and there was significant movement on the revenue plan that certainly helped, you know, bring the budget, or certainly minimize the existing budget gap that was discussed and talked about at the public hearing and throughout the preliminary budget process in March, and at the public hearing on April 10th. So, that was certainly appreciative. It was, as Mr. Menard just alluded to, everyone in this, that was certainly on that list in the prior slide, and members of the finance planning team, Board of Selectmen, and so forth, worked very, very hard over those coming weeks to find and fine-tune the revenue plan to minimize any existing budget gap or potential reduction. So, I think we, you know, worked hard after that meeting at the budget workshop to identify the remaining changes that would kind of need to take place to recommend a balanced budget for fiscal year 2018. Just, I'll just highlight for a moment some of those changes in that revenue plan. There was, on the revenue side of the equation, there was additional revenue that was identified through the House budget, so you had the governor's budget, and the House budget was released in late April, and they identified some additional funds towards Chapter 70, additional $10 per pupil of Chapter 70, which netted some additional revenue. There was some additional revenue identified through free crash, through savings in the snow and ice budget that was moved into the revenue plan that helped, helped increase some of the revenue. And then on the expense equation, there was some savings on the fixed cost side of the, of the expenses in the revenue plan, mainly in the regional school assessments. Our projected anticipated enrollment for students enrolled in the Essex Aggie vocational school declined, netted some savings. And then the anticipated general liability in workers' common insurance netted some savings as well. So, these are several factors we need to help identify some additional revenue that led us to what is presented on this slide and what was discussed at the budget workshop last Monday afternoon. And just for a refresher, I'll just remind everyone, we had previously recommended an FY18 budget of a little over $29,999,968. That was a little over $1.4 million. That would have been a 5.1% increase over fiscal 2017. The available revenue as of April 24th, at the conclusion of the finance planning team meeting last Monday evening, would have produced a budget of $29,633,545. So, that difference, which was, would have been a 3.8% budget increase, so that difference is 366,423. So, when we headed into the budget workshop, we were certainly working from, you know, much smaller numbers, which was certainly efficient of those efforts, but certainly all very much challenging to sort of identify, you know, reductions to bring the budget into balance. So, as a refresher, as a reminder, this slide highlights the recommendations that the administrative team presented to the school committee at the budget workshop on the afternoon of April 24th. I'll just highlight a few on the list. We had discussed the potential of moving to a hybrid, a combined kindergarten model at Hood Elementary School, that would be combined a full-day, half-day program. If we were to do that, we would not need to hire an additional .5 half-day kindergarten teacher, which would net savings in a little over $31,000. As you recall, throughout this process, we were working with our strategic plan and our PS 2021 document to identify some new initiatives and some new positions, 2.9 FTE positions. It was the administration's recommendation that we would not, you know, make any further either personnel reductions beyond, to fund these new positions, although we certainly felt these new positions were high-priority positions identified in our strategic plan. So, these 2.9 FTE positions in total would net savings of 184,788, and we would kind of defer the funding of these positions. The next several line items discussed was essentially kind of squeezing some expense budgets, you know, sharpening the pencils again, and reducing school and district operating budgets. You know, I think it was conversation at Monday evening that this would be certainly a big challenge for the school principals and directors and department budget leaders to, again, try to continue to do more with less and make some further expense reductions. Certainly, there was element of additional risk associated with these reductions, but we certainly felt we would certainly make these work. We talked about the food service program throughout the budget process, and that was certainly something that we were very proud of, and the strides of the food service program as made over the last four or five years. We are very close to operating a break-even, self-sufficient program. And what this $20,000 line item was, there was $20,000 remaining that we were carrying in the general fund to help supplement any loss that the food service program had incurred. In eliminating this line item, essentially, we would need to be fully sufficient in operating a break-even program next year, having no subsidy from the general fund or operating budget. Everything would have to be funded by the revenue of, you know, federal and state sources and the, and the sales from the food service program, all of the expenses. So, again, some additional associated risks with this line item reduction. We then recommended a reduction of some summer student cleaning crew in tune of $10,000. So, this line, this is a $30,000 line item that would be reduced to $20,000. Once again, we have some line items in the budget for extraordinary maintenance and for small capital equipment to help fund some, you know, unforeseen, you know, maintenance item that may come up. If it was a small line item of $10,000, this would eliminate that line item. And then, we were actually looking to restore our small capital equipment budget to help fund some small capital requests that don't qualify for the large capital, you know, process, and some equipment line items. This $15,000 is actually limited two years ago, looking to restore that amount back into the budget, and this reduction would defer that restoration of those line items. The next item on the list was, we have a, actually, we have a retirement in the Building and Browns Department, and one potential solution to identify some savings would be to restructure that position into, you know, to a van driver position, and that would have been a bit of savings of approximately $20,000. The next two items on this list that would complete the list to bring us within balanced budget would essentially make some changes to our revenue assumptions of our bus revolving account. As you know, we charge a fee for parents that don't qualify for free busing, but to participate in the optional busing program. We've relied over the last three or four years on, you know, carryover funds in our revolving accounts. We've increased that reliance on those funds for another year, and then making, changing our assumption of facility rental tuition, the usage fees that we bring in when we rent space. We have seen a significant increase in that revenue, particularly because of this building, Performing Arts Center in particular, and brought in additional revenue, so we would increase that line item offset, that helps offset a variety of maintenance line items by $10,000. So, I think it's fair to say, this certainly was a challenging list to put together, but we felt this would, this was the least harmful, you know, risk of reductions that would certainly, first and foremost, we were trying to protect the classroom experience and the educational experience, and certainly there was a priority as well to avoid any staff reductions and personnel reductions, and, you know, a little challenging to put these items on this list as any item would be, and to, as well as to defer our new initiatives in the NRPS 2021 plan. You know, we felt this was, you know, we were prepared to make this recommendation to the school committee, making these reductions would bring the budget certainly within balance. So, what can we conclude from the FY18 budget? Certainly not the budget we desired, but that being said, it does certainly, you know, make, have some, does accomplish, and what can we conclude? It certainly allows the district to meet its contractual obligations with employees and employee unions. It includes some additional staffing to provide full-day kindergarten for each student and family who wants it, so we made a commitment to do that. So, this does, this budget does achieve additional two positions, a teacher professional position to add a third full-day kindergarten section to provide each student and family who wants full-day kindergarten to experience that. It does include an increase in operational costs to ensure adequate maintenance measures are in place to maintain the middle school and high school campus. So, we've seen, we've learned a lot over the last two or three years, and certainly seen the need to increase our maintenance line items, grant some service agreements, certainly in the area of HVAC, is equipment, heating and cooling equipment, and this budget would accomplish that. Unfortunately, it does include a reduction of our operating budgets for the five schools in the district. That is probably the hardest, you know, definitely one of the more challenging items to experience to, on the prior list. We do feel, despite the operating budget reductions, it does allow the district to maintain level services. Again, we avoid staffing reductions, and does protect the educational experience for students. All that being said, certainly with any budget, there is some inherent risk in that lift of reductions, additional reductions to break the budget in balance certainly added to the, to our associated, you know, financial risks when we, you know, develop the FY18 budget. The potential for additional outside placements is always a possibility, and that certainly would exist. That's probably one of the biggest volatility variables in any school department budget. We continue to rely on some one-time, certainly revenue sources or carryover sources. You know, we're continuing to rely on a prepayment of special education tuitions to help, you know, offset our expenses in the following year. Projected carryover revenue with some of our revolving accounts like transportation and so forth, all put additional kind of pressure on subsequent budget years. We certainly make these assumptions and recommendations as, you know, as calculated as we can. We certainly, again, for the second straight year, have a relatively aggressive estimated teacher attrition savings, you know, that stage we don't have to realize, we might have, you know, a budgetary shortfall in fiscal 18. Reducing the small capital equipment and extraordinary maintenance line items, as well as increasing reliance on facility rental, you know, funds to help offset the budget, does limit the district's ability to address any kind of unforeseen or emergency maintenance issues. There's always a possibility that some of the assumptions that we made in the state budget with the House has forecasted may not be fully funded, and that, you know, our revenue offsets won't be achieved. And then certainly the food service program, although we're certainly, you know, very pleased with the performance over the last four or five years, though that performance can be difficult to predict with enrollment and so forth. So, there's certainly some associated risk with the budget that we have recommended this evening. But that being said, I think, you know, I think it's fair to say that, you know, a lot of hard work and preparation have gone into developing the FY18 budget over the last several months, as we alluded to earlier. Though, you know, none of us certainly wanted to see that list of reductions for that earlier, of about, you know, 1.2% reductions, and we really want it to be back in, you know, March and April. You know, we do feel that, you know, those are, you know, the reductions that has the full score of the administrative team. So, we would be prepared this evening to, to recommend a budget of a 3.8% increase over fiscal 2017, which would be a budget of $29,633,545, a little over, a little more than a million dollar increase over fiscal 17. So, that being said, I'll open up to any, any conversation from the school committee, or we perhaps make a motion.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment first. As Mr. Connolly said, I too want to thank the Board of Select and the Finance Committee, the School Committee, the administration, administrative team, and the finance planning team for working so hard to get us to a balanced budget. But, again, I think I probably, my colleagues will agree with me, we're not happy with this budget. This is level services pretty much because we haven't had to reduce any personnel, and that's why we're calling it level services. But we're really backing into this budget. We're making cuts that are basically smoke and mirrors as far as trying to get to this bottom-line number, and we're not making the type of progress, I think, that we necessarily should as far as, you know, adding additional classes and reducing class size and things of that nature by backing into this budget. So, while I'm going to vote for it, I'm not happy about it. I am, I am thankful that everybody worked so well together to get to this point, but it's really not satisfactory, so.
I would have to agree. Last year, I was working more closely with doing the budget, and it appears that sometimes we almost wait five, three to five years to get something that we should have had three to five years sooner, and we finally get it because it's a have-to situation, guidance counselors, things of that nature. So, it's sad to think that we can't do more. So, I agree with Jerry, while the budget is met, it's done so, unfortunately.
I echo Janine and Jerry's comments, and I just hope that, you know, these kind of risks that we're taking, that, you know, nothing will arise that will greatly impact, you know, other areas of the budget over the course of the year.
It won't take much to throw us out of balance, just...
I think I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I think, certainly, I think more so than any other year, we are the most uncomfortable with the level of risk that we have with this recommendation. Just, I would remind you that we went through a similar exercise last year to the tune of about $120,000, and so here we are now, about $180,000, when you take out the new positions we were hoping to, to secure. So, our ability to, to offset maybe an unanticipated expense has really, I think, been significantly compromised going into next year. And I don't, I'm not setting off any alarm, I just, I feel, as I have in other public meetings, made an acknowledgement that we feel it's important and almost, and it's responsible, the responsible thing to do for us to acknowledge that there is more risk with this recommended budget than, than we are comfortable with. But as Michael said, we were, when we went through the, the work to arrive where we are tonight, it was, it was, it has been and is today, and I hope always will be, we, we worked very hard to preserve the classroom experience for, for students and to, and to, I'll say eliminate, or certainly at least minimize any impact that might be felt there. We took the educational program as our highest priority, and while there are cuts being made, we feel that the, the impact of those will be felt more at the administrative level than they certainly will be at the teacher or student or classroom level.
It's fair, yes.
So, but I appreciate the comments that have been made. We, we share the belief, you know, we, we go through a great deal of, of work to craft what I think is an extremely detailed and comprehensive strategic plan, a five-year strategic plan that enjoys the community's support, the school committee's support, and the support of the staff, and to not make any movement in a positive direction next year with the acquisition of any new positions which would in turn translate to new programs is disappointing. But I, I think we, we very early on acknowledged the fiscal constraints that we were going into with fiscal year 18, and the available revenues, and I certainly, you know, what I'm saying right now is not meant to, to express any level of disrespect for anyone. We are understanding of the situation, but we do think that there needs to be something that, that, that changes in order for us to advance not only what we need to do, but the things that we would like to do, because we believe philosophically that the, the academic and co-curricular experience of students from kindergarten through grade 12 is, has been, you know, very important in this community, and I think we have an obligation to, I think, raise awareness for that. My hope is that as we look at the fiscal 19 budget development, not, not that far off, that we might be, you know, confronted with some of the similar conversations that we're having right now, and just by doing that earlier can maybe, you know, start to think about how we might be able to not be in this situation in the next year or two, so.
Well, my comments on it are that this is the ninth budget that I've seen since I've been on the school committee, and it's the worst of all that I can remember. The constraints are, are just, they're compounded every year. There was a letter in the transcript that said, suggested that we go to zero-based budgeting. First off, I can't imagine... First off, I can't imagine doing that in a school system because the whole basis that you have is what worked last year. And because we are always constrained by the revenue, we don't just kind of spend up to the revenue that's available. I just, I take real issue with that letter. But this is the best that we can do. We have limited resources in town. Hopefully, in a couple, three years, we'll have the influence of the Berry Property Development, and that will bring new revenue to the town, and that will help us through these hard times. I've watched the expense budget diminish, I think, virtually every year out of those nine, and it wasn't real flush when it started. So I think that we've worked hard to get to where we are. We've had lots of cooperation from other townsfolk. I've extolled the virtues of the finance planning team to every other school committee person that I've met outside of North Reading, and I think it works well. Somehow, we'll probably muddle through with this year as well, but it is not, it's not Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to, I move that the school committee approve and adopt the final FY18 school operating budget of $29,633,545. That represents an increase of 3.8 percent or $1,87,403 over the fiscal year 17 appropriation of $28,546,142. The budget I'm moving to adopt is $29,633,545.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
The only thing I want to say again, I want to make it clear to everybody, that the administration worked extremely hard to keep our staffing constant, that we did not lose any people, that we did not let any people go, that there are no layoffs, and they worked very hard to do that despite some real pressure from the school committee and to look at some other educational alternatives. So I want to commend them on the hard work that they did to, again, to keep all of our people in place who are doing such a good job for us across the board. I'm talking about faculty, staff, everybody that's, including the people who are sitting here tonight, for their good work that gets us through every single fiscal year. But it's tough. One of these days, we're going to have to start looking at some alternatives. But fortunately, this year, we were able to get through the year and keep all, everybody in place. So that's one positive thing about this budget.
I guess I have one more comment. If the state would pony up for their share and put out the $2 billion a year that they have as a shortfall, all of us would be in a whole lot better situation. Unfortunately, in this town, we have one guy to go, two guys to go to, and they're on our side. But the rest of the state needs to get with the program. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Okay. I guess we go back to continued business. MSBA SSBC update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a few things to update the committee on. Work on the punch list continues. Manafort was on-site the week of April the 18th to address all of the, or to begin to address all of the remaining punch list items exclusive of the non-drainage punch list items. And some of the work that was addressed is in the area of the softball and multipurpose fields with addressing some of the soil erosion. There was a soft bench at the softball field that was loose. There were some stickers remaining on some of the hardware down there that's been removed. The new handicap curb cuts and repaving in those areas. There was some loam and crush stone that had still been stored over in the area of the wastewater treatment plant that was removed, as well as some stakes and silt sacks that had been in place during the major construction portion of the project. Silktown roofing has been on-site. There were a couple of minor leaks in the roof, but they have been addressed and resolved, I'm happy to say, having caused no damage. They also did some work to realign canopies, kind of the aluminum canopies at the main entrances of both the middle school and the high school. The repairs to the drainage system, they began really in earnest on Tuesday, April the 18th. That was the day that Dow, the Dow Company was on-site to conduct their own mandrel testing of the drainage system. And that took two days, the 18th and the 19th, a Tuesday and a Wednesday of that week. And then on Thursday is when the actual work began and it continues today. I learned today that starting tomorrow, I'm not sure for exactly how long, but they are doubling their manpower to stop addressing some of the outstanding concerns with the drainage system in the hope of resolving things sooner rather than later. We have gotten a lot of cooperation with parents coming to the building and obeying the restrictions on the access to the middle and high school during the school day once student drop-off has been completed and before student dismissal. The work is continuing after student dismissal until dusk. We have had one Saturday worth of work. It's likely that there will be some work this coming Saturday. That's kind of on an as-needed basis and depending upon what's going on on campus. But, you know, still a good amount of work to be completed, but they are working diligently to address the outstanding concerns with respect to the drainage system. You may have seen, and Mr. Veneti, you referenced that it was used on Saturday, which was nice. The new discus pad was installed for the track and field team, and then we worked with the local DPW to install the sleeves for the netting that was purchased as part of a fundraising effort by the high school boys and girls track team, as well as the landscaping, kind of the loaming and seeding of the adjacent areas from when the concrete was installed. There was an outstanding painting need of a gas line in the area of the loading dock that has been addressed. The M O N company, MON Company, was on-site the week of April 24th to begin kind of doing an inventory and assessment of the outstanding landscaping needs. And I would just, I would want to remind folks that we have not accepted the landscaping, so we still have a one-year period from the date of acceptance for warranty items. So that clock has not started ticking. And I just listed for you some of the work that has been done and some of which is due to be done with respect to the landscaping. So there was some mowing, some trimming and removing of weeds. There was an identification of some areas that need to be sliceeded and hydroceded, some of the sloped areas that you see around the campus and down leading toward the new fields, the hill. There was some soil erosion over the course of the winter. They've begun to identify plantings that are needing to be replaced. They believe that a good number of the trees are, the flowering trees particularly, are budding and looking good, but they have identified a number that do need to be replaced. Then there were some that are more obvious. I'll call them kind of like the scrub pines, or, you know, they're dead, they're brown, so they died from, you know, I'm assuming either a poor winter or a harsh winter or lack of water when they were originally planted. But there is a plan to address all of the outstanding landscaping items by May 30th. That is at least the schedule for now. And I think that's all I had with respect to the building project, unless anyone had any questions.
Any questions?
No, I just comment on what John said, that we haven't accepted the landscaping. We won't accept the landscaping until we're 100% satisfied with what has been done out there. It's been a long battle with them, but they're going to keep coming back and they're going to keep fixing it until it's done right.
I agree. I should add too, that I do have, if not daily contact, but right now it has been daily for, you know, the last few weeks, particularly around the preparations for addressing the drainage system. But I have a daily meeting of varying length with representatives of Gilbein and PMA too. So the level of communications is still there, and that's a good thing.
Nice to see they haven't gone away.
No, no, they're here.
Next item on our agenda is the Walter S. Flint School Fund and the Alice G. Holt LD Bachelor School Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think this is kind of a joint presentation to you between Mr. Conley and I, but you might, we're asking to revisit the presentation that we had made to you. I believe it was March 27th when we were at the Hood School, and it was a meeting that followed the March 6th presentation by two of the trustees of trusts for the town where they identified funds that were available through wills that had been left, gifts to the town through wills of people who had deceased many, many years ago. And so what Mr. Conley and I have done is we've worked to identify what we think are some sources, some projects that we would like the source of these funds to contribute to. So what we've put together for you here is the balance, just as a reminder, the balance in the two funds. The Walter Flint Fund has right now an expendable balance of $35,285.03. The provision in the gentleman's will was that it would always maintain a balance of $10,000, and the interest earned on it could be used for school-related purposes to the benefit of the children of the school. And the Alice G. Holt LD Batch Elder School Recreation Fund. I should add, by the way, that both of these funds have been accessed in the past for various projects, but the Walter Flint Fund, not for quite some time, is my understanding. And the Alice G. Holt LD Batch Elder School Recreation Fund has an expendable balance of $901.21. So what we are recommending to you is, we do still have an outstanding balance on the middle school, high school, new fields project, the sodding irrigation project of the softball diamond and the all-purpose field. So it would be our recommendation, okay, right, it's our recommendation, that of the $35,285.03 in the Walter Flint Fund, that all but $6,000 of that be used to offset the outstanding balance on that new fields project and also to be used toward purchasing some of the ancillary equipment that we feel is needed. The bleachers at the softball diamond, we're looking at potentially a dugout cover for the two dugouts. And we also, as part of the athletic subcommittee, identified the need for two gates to be installed to kind of do a better job of identifying the line of demarcation, so to speak, of the dugouts to just public access. So that's one recommendation. And I think Michael probably can tell you exactly the amount, but we have about a $22,000 outstanding debt?
Yeah, it's about, so it's $24,822 at the moment, so.
So we could offset that outstanding amount as well as use some of the money toward purchasing some of the other equipment that's needed. And then we're recommending to you that the remaining $6,000 of that $35,285.03 be coupled with some funds that are available through rental, facility rentals, rental of spaces, particularly in the middle high school campus. So we're proposing that we would take $6,000 from the Walter Flint Fund, couple that with $6,000 from the facility rentals fund, and make a contribution of $12,000 for the purchase of additional microphones and related technology purchases in the Performing Arts Center. As part of this building project, there were a number of what they call lavalier mics, the kind of the headless wireless microphones that the student actors use. It's no secret, I don't think to anyone, that we have a very robust theater program and just have the need for more microphones. And currently, they get rented, and they're not cheap. They're not cheap to rent, and they're certainly not cheap to buy. But we think that $12,000 can go a long way toward adding to our current stash, if you will, of microphones.
John, what is the purchase price for those microphones?
They're about $1,000. Yeah, they're expensive. Yeah. Which is why there hasn't been an opportunity to purchase them, you know, just outright. And we feel that this amount of money, I think, gives, it can make a difference because we're going to be able to purchase a good number of them. And then secondly, I did have a conversation, I don't have as much specific information on what the purchase might be, but I did have a conversation with Mr. Colleen, the principal at the Batch Elder School, and also Mrs. Weiss, the physical education teacher at the Batch Elder School, and to tell them that I was going to be making a recommendation to the school committee on making these funds of the $901.21 available for a purchase of a physical education-related piece of equipment. And, you know, should that be adopted by the school committee, that they might want to start thinking about what might they, what they want to buy for the batch elder students. So our recommendations are, I think, you know, in the third column of the memo that you've been issued, and I think it probably would require a vote, Mr. Chairman, if you agree.
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to allocate from the Walter S. Flint School Fund the amount of $29,285.03 towards the construction of the new athletic fields at North Reading Middle and High School and the purchase of ancillary equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also move to allocate from the Walter S. Flint School Fund the amount of $6,000 to be combined with a contribution of $6,000 from the facilities rentals account to the theater program at North Reading Middle School, High School for microphones and related technology purposes.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Do you want to do that? Do you want to do the batch elder?
If you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to allocate $901.21 from the Alice G. Holt LD Batch Elder School Recreation Fund to be spent at the Batch Elder School in a way to be determined, I think, by the administration and the principal.
Is that all right?
Second.
Made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. And this is Embriado, and we will have.
I'll take the lead on this one. Here's your original one. I believe one of the members asked me if their original one was that.
They got a watermark on it now.
I think I gave you two. Oh, that's, my printer printed it off for me, sorry. Thank you. Overall, we found that you met your obligations as a superintendent, so we'll keep you on for another year. You did rate proficient with exemplary being hit a couple of times as well, so I'll probably go over that. The standards that he was, I can't think of the word, judged on or evaluated on, that's the word, was instructional leadership, management, and operations of which he received proficient. And standard three for family and community engagement, he got an exemplary, I can't talk, and professional culture, again, on proficient. And then within those standards were a bunch of things that added up to whether it was proficient or higher or lower. I don't think that he fell below proficient on anything. Some of the comments had to do with the effort that he put into on the SSBC and the little school project, how professional he is and how much of a breath of fresh air, for lack of, you know, better word, he is to work with within those boundaries. The hard work that he puts into working with the administration team and things that he has brought to the district, full integration of the new schools, the extensive use of the facilities, the global child foreign language program, how the batch was honored at the State House, efforts to increase the social and emotional space, and coordinated regional looks at school times, possibly the change of, even though that's probably years in the making, he still has put the effort into finding out. And once again, the little school roof. He continues to be a hard-working educational leader. He models and expects high standards for all of the schools in the district. He continues to cultivate valuable educational programs and partnerships like with Merrimack College. And he appreciates the work that the teachers do, and he welcomes opportunities to witness their efforts in the classroom. I'm not going to read everything, just kind of highlight little pieces of it. I'm not going to read everything, just kind of highlight little pieces of it. And that was for the standard of, oh, overall. And then for the standard of instructional leadership, once again, he got a proficient, and some of the comments was that he, we have seen improvements in the use of the data and coordinated data teams, i.e. the digital learning model is starting to, like, take its root and showing a lot of positive movement. There was some concern over what seems to be the evaluation system. While it works, maybe there's a little bit overload on the ones who have to do all of the evaluations. He's used his knowledge of leadership from having been the high school principal, and he's grown into the leadership and has become an effective superintendent. He maintains positive relationships with the administration council members, and based on, it's something called the NSIP, and I don't remember, like, national.
New superintendent induction program.
There you go. They rated him very high in all areas of leadership as well. And under management and operations, once again, he got proficient. Some of the highlighted things are, he makes good process on dealing with the social and emotional learning issues. John and his team do a great job. The budget document is always thorough and meets the district's needs, but insufficient funding, as we've just learned, usually holds us back. Without having a human resource director, John does an excellent job with recruiting and hiring process. He's very knowledgeable in law, ethics, and policies, and he sets a high but reasonable goal for the district. The superintendent, along with administrative council, works very hard to create a thorough yet reasonable budget. His work to create a comprehensive strategic plan is greatly appreciated, and just the amount of detail that he puts into the budget and shares with the other town entities goes a long way. And then for family and community engagement, I believe this is where he got his highest, where he actually got the exemplary instead of just proficient. And says John continues, has continued, and expands a very high-level communication initiated by his predecessor, and the continuation of the level of communication to all stakeholders is a substantial benefit to the district. I believe John is an incredible communicator. The weekly articles and the transcript are extremely helpful. You'd still like to see, sorry, would still like to see a district Facebook page, but the use of social media, Twitter, and the new district website has improved the digital There's not heard, I have not heard one negative comment from the community at large regarding John's overall performance. Great communicator, is sincere, listens in earnest, and has an open-door policy. And lastly, the superintendent is very visible in the community. He positively supports academics and extracurricular student activities. He is responsive to concerns from families and community members, and he has worked with varied townwide groups to bring meaningful events to the community. His quarterly newsletters, newsletter is comprehensive and well-received by stakeholders, and that's why he got an exemplary. And then the professional culture, again, he got a proficient. John constantly pushes for high performance and works closely with the administrative council to make it happen. John is an excellent communicator and always makes it clear where he stands on an issue and what he wants to accomplish. The superintendent meets regularly with building principals to discuss and reflect upon the building's improvement plans and overall needs. His communication skills are solid, and he represents the district well. And so overall, he does a very good job. And that's it. Any comments?
I want to thank Julie and Janine, because that's really hot war.
This was mostly Janine's undertaking.
Yeah, but good job, Janine, I think you presented it very well, too. I want to apologize for my not putting in as much input into this as I should have or could have. These evaluation forms almost make it impossible, you know, through the forms, to give somebody an exemplary rating. Makes it very difficult. So for John to have an exemplary in one category and proficient, when you hear proficient, it doesn't sound like it's much above what you would expect. I don't like the word, to be honest with you, because I think John's doing an exemplary job in almost every single aspect of the superintendent's position. I really feel that way. And I think I gave him some high marks, and I think we all did, actually, but to say proficient doesn't do just cause to, I think, the job that John's doing. And not only John, but the entire administrative team, along with Patrick and Michael and Cynthia and everybody, so, you know, I wholeheartedly support the overall evaluation that was given to John. I wish, again, we could do something more than proficient, but these forms are almost impossible to deal with, so.
Actually, the form has four categories listed, and three of them are in a normal font, and one of them is about three times the size. The one that's three times the size font is the one that says proficient. It came from DESE, and like we, like they really, they're really trying to make the point that proficient is really good.
Yeah, but it doesn't sound good when you say proficient.
Those of us that are evaluated under a tool, because this is a similar rating scale with the teachers, we all feel that way. We wish the word were a little different.
Well, I mean, if you think of statewide assessment also, and our goals for schools, I mean, that's just been the trend of the Department of Ed.
That's right.
So, you know, while some may look at the word proficient as, you know, not preferred, I think it's a job well done.
Yeah, I agree.
I guess since it's my last day on the job, I can truly criticize the Department of Elementary Education in public.
What about the rest of us?
The rest of you can do what you want to do.
Cliff, I do that, and I'm still here.
Be stuck here for another year.
But you might not be next year.
That's fine with me.
That's what happens when you're after Big Brother.
No, you're doing a great job, John. It doesn't necessarily translate into a race, but it's a good job.
I remember when your predecessor, Kathy Willis, was hired, one of our highest requirements, most important requirements, is that she be a communicator. And in fact, she was a communicator. She got out and did a lot of communication. And one of the things that my evaluation pointed out is that you have continued that. We haven't, haven't lost it. And I think that's very important, to let the community understand what's actually going on here, because actually, it's, we charge them a lot of money for it, and they ought to know what it is that they're buying.
Thank you.
Just one more, one more comment. I think from the student perspective, I appreciate the amount of time that you go to each and every school and see the learning that's happening, meeting with the principals. Showing support for the staff, I think, is vital, and I, that shouldn't be understated. I mean, both of my children comment on a regular basis, "Oh, I saw Mr. Bernard." You know, "He came into my classroom, he wrote a book, he asked about a digital learning project that was happening," and I think that's very important. I think sometimes administration can get lost in an office, and I think that you really make a concerted effort to get out there and see what's going on in the schools, and I appreciate that.
But he knows who your kids are and.
He sees everyone, trust me.
Thank you. It's very important for me, believe me. I, it's nice to hear that they get something out of it.
Absolutely.
I believe I do, too.
I've got a question for you.
Uh-oh.
Oh, no, it's a good one. When you were the principal, you were all over the high school. Everyone knew you, you knew every child's name, and when you took over as superintendent, you were not afraid, that's not the right word, but you were kind of.
Concerned.
About going to the other schools.
I would tell you that the, probably the most enjoyable difference for me as the superintendent from being the high school principal is the exposure to the elementary schools. My entire career was at the secondary level before becoming the superintendent, I always worked in a high school, and didn't have, I don't think, the understanding of the breadth of work that goes on in an elementary school, and just how fun it is. I mean, the teachers, God bless them, they, that is work, boy. I mean, they are just, boy, they are making such an impression at a young age, and it's a real treat to be in an elementary school for me, to witness firsthand what is being asked of children from kindergarten and first grade, right up through the line. I'm very impressed with, number one, what the expectations are and students' abilities to meet that. So I feel like I, quite honestly, have to make the concerted effort to be in the schools because it's very easy to get caught up in the office with just the work that has to get done. But I do hard schedule, as I think all of you know, time in each school each month, and that's the hard scheduling. And then I do just, you know, often go to a school just because I want to kind of go into a school and see, see what's going on. And I do think it is, I think it's critically important that I do that, and I think it's critically important for the staff, for the teachers, for the students, but it's important for me, too. I think it helps to keep me, I'd like to think it helps to keep me in touch with what's going on, what the needs are, and to be able to speak to what I see, you know, keeps me informed. So I appreciate all of the feedback, you know, as was said, I think Jerry, you said about the team of people that I work with, and that includes, I think, it certainly includes Michael and Patrick and Cynthia as the three other central office administrators, but it includes many more than that. It's from administrators to teachers to support staff. This is a good district. I inherited something very good, I think that's true, but I think, you know, it does not, it's not one person's job, and I am only as successful as I can be with the support of the people that I get and the community. This community has been outstanding to me. It's 14, coming up on the end of my 14th year here. I can honestly say, you know, I look forward to coming to school. I still come to school, I don't come to work, I say I come to school. So I'm very happy, I appreciate the feedback. There obviously are areas where I look to grow, but your comments to me, not just tonight and through the evaluation, but the feedback that you give to me on a regular basis is appreciated, and it, you know, I hope I'm doing, you always hope that you're doing a good job, but it is nice to, to hear it. But I can honestly tell you, I, whatever challenges might confront me on a daily basis, I've never gone home feeling like the work we were doing here, the work that I was doing was not appreciated, and that's, that's true today as it was July 1st, 2003, so, so thank you.
So you've been on the job for three years now, right?
Coming up on the end of the third, yeah.
And all the students' names?
You know, that's, so I talked about what, one of the things I've enjoyed the most, and that is the elementary school experience. One of the things that I, I miss the most is the more, the regular interaction with students, you know, I miss, I miss, I miss them. But I don't know the names like I used to, just because you don't have the extended exposure, you know, and, but Michael and I, every morning, just about every morning, are on Main Street when the, when the high school and middle school are arriving, and we spend some time out there, just about every morning, 20 or so minutes, whatever it is. And it's good, we get work done, too, because sometimes kids need things from me, sometimes the staff are asking us questions, but I think that visibility is hugely important, so. But I do know your kids' names, and I know your, and I know your grandchildren. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
I think that's a good thing.
I agree. I agree.
My grandchildren, I mean.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we're done with that. Next item on our agenda is school choice, public hearing, and vote. Under Education Reform Act of 1993, there's a need to hold an annual public hearing on school choice. Coming, school choice district means that North Reading will accept students from other cities and towns for enrollment in its schools. Once a student is accepted as a choice student, he or she is a student until graduation or the student opts to withdraw. The district receives an additional $5,000 from sending districts' Chapter 70 funds for each student accepted. After the hearing, the school committee has to make a decision on the participation by taking a vote, and that vote is then reported to DESE by June 1. Over the years, the motion approved by the school committee is included to not participate in the school choice program because, as it's presently constructed, it ensures the needs, that the needs of some of the children of the Commonwealth cannot be met.
So we can open a public hearing, close a public hearing for public input.
Right, so we're going to now open the public hearing. Public hearing on school choice is now open. Are there any comments?
Same as last year.
Hearing none, the hearing is closed.
Then we have to take a vote.
Any discussion from the committee?
No, I know in my time on the committee, we've never voted to approve school choice. I think the $5,000 probably has something to do with it, because I think our per pupil expenditure is around, what, 14, isn't it?
Yeah, 14.5.
14.5.
Right, yeah.
So that's one reason, but we've always, in fact, I don't know that I've ever sat with a member who's voted in favor of it, maybe they have, I can't remember.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to not participate in school choice because the program as it is presently constructed ensures that the needs of some of the children of the Commonwealth cannot be met, whatever that means.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, next item on our agenda is the fiscal year 2016 end-of-year financial report. Mr. Connolly?
Great, thank you. So in your packet this evening was the end-of-the-year financial audit report, which essentially is a required to be done annually. And again, just as a reminder, what the end-of-the-year financial report is, is a, essentially a source and use document that essentially throughout encompasses all the revenue and expenses that are kind of spent throughout fiscal year 2016, and there's obviously a specific methodology that we need to kind of report the data based on the DESE's chart of accounts, and it is a pretty extensive process that takes, you know, several weeks to complete, and once the fiscal year is closed, it's due by September 30th every year. And you're required by March 31st of every year to have an independent outside audit firm audit the end-of-the-year financial report. So what's in front of you is the audit report, and I think I'm happy to report that essentially what the audit report is stating, that there was, you know, almost no or minimal findings, and everything was reported accurately and in the correct methodology, and certainly reported on, on time. So we certainly were pleased with how the audit report came out this year, and really with that being said, I don't know if there's any particular questions on anything in the report, so. Again, it's a report that has several different schedules and encompasses all expenditures and revenues from a variety of accounts, not just the general fund, special revenue accounts, included gift accounts, you know, grants, so, but everything was found to be reported correctly.
Any discussion?
The only, the only question I saw, and that was just a reporting change, was about the bus ridership.
Right, yeah, that was.
All those were reported.
I didn't hear that.
Bus ridership, like whether we get reimbursed versus paid.
There was a bus ridership, they had, I actually, I actually originally reported a couple items, actually, we reported a chart that was essentially was the bus ridership of students that were, you know, greater than two miles away, and we do a methodology every year where we take the ridership of those students that rode the bus greater than two miles, and we actually need to calculate that down to a mile and a half. So there were a couple riderships that reported two miles, and that was noted, and it was just, it was corrected, yeah. So that was, I think that was the one item that was, that was found. So, yeah.
Any further?
Your hail is starting to fall a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
They have to find something.
I had to ask a question.
Believe it or not, it was, it was actually just the day, the data, a lot of times when they find something, it was, we did the report, and it's the way the data was con-
we did the report and it's the way the data was copied over. You're entering so many numbers and, uh, but, um, that's why they do it, right?
The next item on our agenda is the North Shore Education Consortium Establishment of Capital Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, in, in my role as a member of the Board of Directors, um, for the North Shore Education Consortium, all representatives have been asked to bring back to their respective school committees a request to sign on to, um, supporting the establishment of a capital fund for the North Shore Education Consortium. I do recommend this action. But just to give you a little bit of background, um, the North Shore Consortium does own property for a part of its educational collaborative that obvious, needs obvious kind of maintenance, uh, needs and such, um, for being able to fully service the students from its participating districts. Collaboratives such as, as the North Shore Consortium can act, uh, apply for funding or support through the Mass School Building Authority, so they are a little bit limited in their, um, scope of access to resources in order to do any kind of capital projects that they might want to undertake. But the Department of Education recently mandated a change, um, in accounting procedures for the consortiums that serve students with, with disabilities, um, which does allow for the establishment of a capital fund. So, the, our board obviously views this as a positive. Without an established capital fund, the, the limits of the law, uh, would put, um, a cap on the amount of surplus revenue that would be allowed to retain each year. But because of the establishment of the capital fund, we are able to move, uh, any, um, annual surpluses into, into this newly established fund. And our board for this school, um, has, has set a cap. We would actually cap it at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be, um, approximately three percent of the annual operating expenditures. So, we saw, we saw, I think, we saw that as good kind of accounting practice, first of all. And also saw that it, um, it, it also struck a healthy balance between what member districts are seeking, um, or are asked to pay essentially for students that attend the consortium, but also recognizing that there were some kind of short-term and longer-term capital needs that would make the facilities, um, appropriate for, as educational institutions. One example I can give you of that is, um, of the lobby of the main campus on Sawyer Road in Beverly has kind of a brick, um, floor, uh, in the, in the main entrance of the school. And it's, it's, it's uneven, it's, it's literally stone brick that is grouted or, or cemented and, and it has, it was, it was a building that was retrofitted to be a school and it makes it very difficult for, um, students who either have, um, a wheelchair or, um, some sort of a support walker, um, to navigate the floor. So, that's kind of one of the, uh, short-term, uh, items that's hoped to be addressed. So, essentially what, what I'm being asked to do is to, um, uh, have the, the North Reading School Committee, um, sign on, uh, to, um, support the establishment of a capital fund. I think it's good practice. I feel that the, uh, presentation that's been made by the executive director and also the Director of Finance and Operations at the school has been a good presentation and has, you know, exercised, I think, sound judgment in their, uh, proposal to all of us that I'm now, you know, carrying forth to you. And this needs, um, two-thirds of the member districts to, to approve it. And I sense that that will happen. And I'd like for North Reading to be one of the, one of the districts that supports the initiative.
Yes, Julie?
Just to clarify, John, this does not, um, allocate funds from our district to the consortium.
Beyond what we already pay for tuition for students that attend, correct. No, it, they, they would not be coming to us and saying, because you've now signed on to this, North Reading is responsible for X amount of additional dollars. No, this is, and this is only if a surplus is realized. If a surplus is realized in a given year, um, the idea is that that money would be channeled toward, um, toward the capital fund. I think, for example, in, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, in the last fiscal year, North Reading's gain would have been about seven thousand dollars, am I right?
I think that's correct, yeah.
You know, rough, like a little, like seven thousand sixty-two dollars or something. And I just think for that amount of money, it's better spent, because these, again, these are North Reading students, remind you, you know, that, that are attending the school. And I think it's a, it's a reasonable request to allocate an amount of money such as that, um, for something like this. So, no additional funds would be committed, that's correct. So, I think if the, if the, um, if the committee agrees, it, it would, Mr. Chairman, require a vote, a motion of a vote.
Do you need a vote to approve the capital plan as well or just for the?
Only to establish the fund.
Okay.
Right. And there is a document that the, um, Chairman would need to sign if you agree.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the creation of a North Shore Education Consortium Capital Fund consistent with the guidelines established by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
I stand corrected, it is to approve the plan as well.
And also to approve the N A C.
Capital plan, correct.
Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
So, now we're on to routine matters. We have, uh, open session minutes for the budget workshop on March twenty-third. The motion?
Motion to approve regular meeting minutes of the school committee for March twenty-third, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Made and seconded, any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And the open session, uh, minutes for March twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to a regular meeting minutes of the school committee, open session, March twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Made and seconded, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Budget update?
Yes.
Conley?
So, um, in your packet this evening was the, uh, budget update that reflects financial activity through the middle of April. And, um, as has been the case in the past, we've broken down the report through expenses, activity and payroll activity. On the expense side of the equation, you'll notice as we've reported in the past, there is some funds available in the special education, uh, district tuition line item and that is mainly because we, again, exceeded our, uh, tuition prepayments at the end of fiscal sixteen and we projected, uh, we would during the FY seventeen budget development process. Again, we've, uh, been tracking utility expenses, uh, pretty closely throughout the fiscal year. Um, and as I've reported in the past as well, we do anticipate spending the majority of our electricity budget and will, we do anticipate having a small amount of funds available in the gas budget to, to reapportion at this point. I've also reported that we've experienced, um, higher than anticipated maintenance costs throughout the district, in particular, uh, maintenance costs to address H VAC, uh, issues at the middle school and high school campus. Uh, again, today, we've been able to kind of manage these costs to stay within budget ranges. But again, over the last couple months of the fiscal year, we'll certainly need to monitor these expenses closely as we prepare to close out the fiscal year. Um, the food service program closed out, uh, the month of March with a small net loss of seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. To date, uh, through the, the month of March, um, the loss is fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars, although this is significantly less than it was through this time last year where the net loss was over twenty thousand dollars. Um, as I reported throughout the budget development process, we are still hoping and anticipating that we will lose slightly more than eight thousand dollars at the end of the school year. So, it's certainly been, um, you know, mail sold throughout the year, each month had been up throughout, throughout the district. On the payroll side, there's really nothing significant to report. As I talked a little bit about tonight during the FY eighteen, uh, development, uh, budget process, we, again, in fiscal seventeen, budgeted a higher than typical staff turnover savings amount. Therefore, um, on the report, you do notice that the, you know, projected, uh, year-end balances for the teachers and some of the salary line items are certainly less than it has been in the past at this time of year. To date, there has been less of a need to appoint long-term substitutes, um, to fill for extended leave of absences for our staff. So, as a result, you, you'll notice that there is, we are projecting a, a, a surplus in this, in the substitute budget accounts. Um, but most other payroll projections at this time indicate that, that, again, will be very close to, to budgeted amounts, so. So, we're kind of getting there, we have two months remaining this, this fiscal year. I think we're certainly behind the, the heating season and obviously the, the winter season. So, you know, we'll be a busy couple of months as we prepare to kind of close out and review all open purchase orders and open encumbrances. But, um, I think this time we're in solid, you know, financial standing to close out the fiscal year. And, oh, we've, we've taken on that, a little bit of that risk. So, now we are relying on, um, ending the year with a certain, you know, available balance to prepay tuitions and carry over some funds in the, in the, um, bus revolving account. But I think we're in, at this point in the year, we're in good, good standing to meet those, those projections. So, I'll open it up to any, any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Uh, no staffing issues at this point. Bids and donations. Edward Moynihan?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one hundred dollars from Edward W. Moynihan to support the North Reading High School track team.
I'm gonna be the second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand dollars from the Columbus Group, Chart Wells, to provide a scholarship to a graduating senior of the class of two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand five hundred dollars from the North Reading Youth Athletic Association to offset the cost of the new outfield fence at the high school.
Second.
Motion made and seconded?
Quick question. Refresh my memory, why did we have to put that fence there?
We didn't have to. It was a, um, it was a desire. I think they, I think the baseball coach believed it was created more of a, you know, kind of warning track type, yeah, kind of a field aspect, so it was, it was a privately funded.
Okay. I just couldn't remember, my husband.
It's, and it, it's temporary, by the way, it comes back. The sleeves, where they were recessed in the ground about two feet.
Okay.
And that, when the season's over, the fence can come out and it gets stored for the, until the next spring.
Oh, yeah, I just couldn't remember.
Yeah, it came from the baseball coach. I mean, I think he wanted to make it more of a stadium of that and have an opportunity to hit the ball out of the ballpark a little bit, so.
Very good.
He's got power hitters this year, next year he may take it down.
Yeah, right.
It's temporary, that's why I'm sitting in the chair and not on the ceiling.
No, because we'll still use the, the outfield in the fall.
Yeah, we're gonna need it for soccer.
Right, right.
Okay, now.
Sure.
You made the motion?
And seconded, yes.
Seconded, all right. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of three thousand dollars from the North Reading High School class of two thousand eleven for the purpose of pers- purchasing signage for the middle and high school campus.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you vote, could I, just a little comment about that, just so you have, you might remember you accepted a donation not that long ago from another previously graduated class. So, the sign we're looking to purchase is quite expensive. Um, I, I'm, I'm hoping that the class of two thousand seventeen is gonna consider a class gift toward the country. It's about a sixteen thousand dollar sign. It's a, it's an electric sign, it would have like a digital message board and if you could program, you might have seen them.
One down by the field, that one you have to sort out.
With the letters, yeah, right, it would be, the idea would be to, you know, get rid of that. Whether we put it in the exact same spot or not, I don't know. But I don't, I don't want there to be a thought that this is something that's gonna happen very soon, it's, it's, it's.
We're collecting.
We're collecting toward it, yeah, it's probably a couple of years in the making. But, um, I think when we, when it's ultimately, the money is ultimately there, I think it could be a, quite a nice sign for us to have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of six thousand dollars from the North Reading Diamond Club to offset the cost of the new outfield fence at the high school.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the Chair thanks all of these contribu- contributors for their generosity.
Sure.
That way it won't be attributed maybe to the Vice Chair. Subcommittee updates, finance planning team. That'd be you and I, Jerry, what can we say?
Well, we met one last time to try to get the budget balanced. We were able to do it, we discussed the revenue plan. It was a combination of, uh, coming up with a little bit more money, some of it savings from our liability insurance premiums, some of it from free cash, some of it, um.
Unexpended, so, snow and ice.
Snow and ice money, Chapter Seventy was a small increase. And the combination of those additional revenues plus us reducing, as Michael reviewed today, um, our budget got us to a point where we had a balanced budget. I, I do think we backed into it, but again, the finance planning team worked very hard to get us to this point so that we can go to town meeting in a few weeks with a balanced budget. The town also balanced their budget, I believe, too, I mean.
They did, yeah.
So, there's no, no deficits at this point in time. Uh, we also talked about the high school project fairly extensively, where we were at, what we're trying to do. I think we've reviewed that tonight. We're still in the process of finishing the drainage work and also some of the landscaping. We, uh, and then moving forward on the punch list items as well. I think Mr. Bernard Purnit, uh, reported that the little school roof was complete, the project was finished and we were prepared to close it out.
Yes, under budget.
Under budget, came in under budget. Uh, we did review, um, the turf field bathrooms, so as you all know, those are out to bid, the bids are due in, I believe, May fourth. And those bids will be, be based on one, a facility that, by the way, has been reduced in size because, uh, we took an appeal to the, was it the State Plumbing Board? Uh, and they reduced the number of fixtures, bathroom fixtures from an overall number of thirteen down to ten. So, there'll be five ladies fixtures and five men's fixtures, uh, in the building. So, we're, we're asking, what, I'm sorry?
No, you're good.
Oh. Um, we're asking for, um, bids on the construction of the bathrooms. We're also asking for an add alternate for construction of a pad for a snack shack. And we're also asking for the cost of the bathrooms plus the, uh, snack, uh, snack shack there, so. Let me see, what else? We reviewed the town meeting articles and, uh, and I think that was pretty much, we did talk about the Berry property a little bit, too.
A little bit.
And that's closing in, uh, hopefully, it looks like everything's on schedule.
Seems to be moving ahead.
They're going to town meeting again, if there's another vote required, I think.
Correct.
And, um, if we can close by December thirty-first, we'll maximize the amount of money that we can retain, which is gonna be in the vicinity of twenty million dollars for the town. So, um, and yet to be seen what we'll do with that money, but, so I think that's pretty much it.
Maybe first in line?
Yeah.
And as important as the twenty million dollars in cash, the potential for revenue from taxes.
Right.
Continuing every year at about three million dollars estimated.
Yeah.
Will be a real plus because it's an over fifty-five development and we're not expecting a lot of, uh, a lot of costs associated with it.
Yeah, it's probably the largest new growth that we'll ever have, I mean, as far as that three million, at one time, I mean.
Yeah, right.
Next, uh, on the agenda is the athletics subcommittee, we met on April twenty-fifth. Uh, the Webster's not here, so it's all on Mr. Bernaz here.
Okay, the athletics subcommittee met, we discussed the, the revolving account, the close out of the revolving account. It looks like for the end of the year, we're actually gonna have, uh, some money left over, about seventeen thousand, Mike?
Right now, that's the projection.
Well, say, if everything goes well, about seventeen thousand dollars. We had a lot, high participation for the spring sports and we got a lot of user fees in. Let me see, what else do we have? Got the wrong.
We talked about the, uh, I think we, at that meeting, we also talked about the lavatory facilities.
We talked about the bathrooms again, that's been the topic of conversation, also meetings we've had over the last, uh, six to nine months. Uh, we talked about the, uh, outfield fence, that that was in there, why it was there, Janine already highlighted that. What else, John?
Field, field maintenance seemed to be good.
Field maintenance is something that's being shared by, um, the town and, uh, and the school department and it's worked out very, very well, uh, in the past. We opened the softball field, uh, the first game was last week.
Thursday of, uh, school vacation.
Played on it and then immediately after the varsity game, there was a youth softball game on the field and the kids were delighted to be playing on that field. We also talked about when to open the all-purpose field, we don't think it's quite ready yet. We want it to sit a little bit longer, although we did use it for the javelin on Sa- on Sunday, but I think that was. but I think that was about it for right now.
That's right. I think we're gonna kind of play that one by year, you know, just to make sure that everything is-
The grass has taken well. I mean, Marty Tilton from Recreation says it's really taken very well. It looks terrific. It's really starting to green up now.
It's looking real good.
It's almost a shame to have to play on it, but, but it looks really good, so. That's, that was pretty much it, I think.
Yeah, we had, it was a shorter meeting than we're used to.
Yeah, yeah. There were a few things on the agenda.
But I think a lot of our-
But the big thing is gonna be the use of the fields.
The fields, right.
You have to spread out the use, like, you can't be on them, you know, every day, all day long.
Right.
Just have one question. Regarding the decreased amount of fixtures, could that, I would assume, affect the bids that come in?
Yes.
Like it would, it could be lower.
We had actually put the bids out, believe it or not, for the, for the reduced number of fixtures.
Correct.
So the bids went out for the reduced.
Oh, okay, so they went for the reduced.
If we didn't win that appeal, and we were fairly confident that we were going to-
That's right.
Then we would've had to have amended the bids to, for the higher number, so they're actually out there for basically 10 toilets.
So they should be, okay.
They should be consistent with what we ultimately have now.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the way we did it.
Okay.
And since it's a modular structure, that's a whole module that would be required, and it's a pretty substantial additional cost.
We actually liked the design.
It's, it's much, much more rational.
We like it better, yeah.
All right, next item is subcommittee schedules. The athletics facilities committee is meeting May 5th at 3:00 PM in the distance learning lab. Finance planning team, May 8th at 8:15 AM in superintendent's conference room. Athletics subcommittee is May 23rd at 12:30 in the superintendent's conference room. And administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do have a few things I just wanna share with you. The first is, if you have not been by the little school, and I know some folks have already since the weekend, excuse me, they really, that entire school community really deserves a lot of credit for the new playground that you have been accepting donations toward for a couple of years now. It's spectacular. It, it is beyond anything, I think, that I expected would come together in literally, I'll say, two, two full days of, of the, the real nuts and bolts work, but it was, there was some site preparation that took place in advance, but I was at the little school on Thursday, and they were prepping the site, but to, when I went there yesterday and saw what I saw, I was amazed at what, you know, less than 72 hours. It is, it is fantastic, and I just, I felt I, I needed to acknowledge tonight, you know, the effort that was undertaken by the parents that were involved, the school administration. There were teachers over the weekend. I know Scott Burke, who's here tonight, has, has been outside with Mrs. Molly, and it really was a, an outstanding effort that was undertaken, and there is a, a formal dedication ceremony set for Friday, May 12th. The school committee members will, will be getting an invitation to that at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, but really, they are, they are to be extended, not only congratulations on behalf of the school district, but appreciation. Really, it's, it's quite a, quite a beautiful playground, so. And I believe it's gonna be unveiled tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow. They, they wanted to let some concrete files up, but I think Mrs. Molly is planning on letting each grade level out, outside for a period of tomorrow to get on the equipment, and they actually got me on it yesterday. Mrs. Molly and I were on it yesterday, wanted a picture for their newsletter, it was, I'm a, I was a lot more agile at 12 than I am at 52.
It gets worse.
Yeah. It was, some of the stuff was not easy. I just, I do wanna just mention a few other things. I, I attached, again, a flyer for you, but the Northeast Massachusetts Youth Orchestra will, for the second year, be performing in our Performing Arts Center. They love our venue with all good reasons, so there are two free concerts being held this Sunday, May 7th, one at 2:30 and at one at 5:00 PM. I did attend last year. Very, very impressive, very impressive, particularly given the age of the children that participate. So we do have some North Reading students, children, participating as well, and if you have the opportunity to, to attend, I would strongly urge you to do so.
The 2:30 performance starts with the youngest-
Yes.
-children, and they, they move up. The 5:00 PM is the older students, and if, if you enjoy good music, this is, this is like going to the Boston Park.
Yeah, it really-
It's really-
It was impressive.
It's really good.
I agree.
And free.
And free.
And local.
And, and I think it's a nice thing for this community to showcase, really. I mean, we got them in here last year, it was actually Mr. Bowers that I think spoke with the director and put her in contact with me, and they, they were very eager to come back here this year, so I, it could be an annual-
It's amazing, this facility. And we had, again, we hosted that Division IV track meet here for the entire state of Massachusetts.
Absolutely.
You know, there were, I don't know how many teams out there, but hundreds and hundreds of students.
Hundreds and hundreds of students, yeah.
It was crazy up there Sunday. And, and we won both, the boys and girls, so I mean, it's just, but the same thing with the Performing Arts Center, the way we're using it now, so.
I should've mentioned that the high school principal got an email early this morning that he shared with some of us from a track official that was at the event Sunday. 35 years, I think, had coached, retired, and now is an official. Wrote a very thoughtful email complimenting Sunday's experience here. We, you know, he didn't need to do it, but he sent, complimenting how well organized, singled out a particular student assistant from North Reading, Rachel Hill, and he was, he wrote a very thoughtful, detailed email about what a great, what a great event it was here, and, and complimented what we had.
And we haven't mentioned the coach's name, but Sotirius-
Satidian Ryan Spitty.
North Reading High School graduate of 2001. Well, I think one of the coaches or head coach-
He is, yeah, he is.
Coach, and they've done a fantastic job with that team, so.
So you're right, the facility just lends itself to so much more.
Once we have bathrooms.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, we had the, yeah, what was it?
Water fountains. Gosh, there was like lines of them.
In the spirit of continuing congratulations, so our, our own Craig Stone, whom many of you know, and is the coach of the Linfield-North Reading Cooperative Wrestling Team, was honored, one of four coaches across the state, was honored at the Mass Chapter of the National Wrestling, Wrestling Coaches Hall, Hall of Fame Dinner on Saturday night. It was a very nice, very nice event. Actually, Bob Kraft came in unannounced.
Really?
He showed up and went to the podium, and I guess-
Really?
A gentleman that's his, they called him his right-hand man, someone that works for him, is involved in the State Wrestling Association, and I think he was the reason why we were able to get that facility for the dinner and the award ceremony, but yeah, he walked in at the back of the room, and you could tell people saw him and started to turn around, and he got a standing ovation, and promised a lot for next season as he came off the draft. It was really kind of cool. But Craig Stone has, you know, had a legendary coaching career, mostly in North, in, excuse me, in Linfield, where he was a teacher up until he retired last year.
What he is, who's-
He's still, yeah, still coaches girls tennis for Linfield and continues, continues to coach wrestling, the co-op team, which is hugely successful, so it was a nice, a nice thing for, for Craig, and I just wanted to know.
Craig lived in North Reading for thirty years.
Oh, right, right, as a resident here, yeah.
He lives down off the site on Central Street, so.
He's a good guy. So, I just wanted to alert you to an additional grant that Mr. McKay, the principal at the Hood School, wrote to the American Academy of Dermatology, and he wrote a grant to install a shade, a shade structure at the Hood School, so we got awarded this grant, it's an $8,000 grant, and he is working with our facilities department, as well as the town's building inspector, to install a sunshade structure, kind of, if you can picture like a four-poster covered shade structure near the, near the playground at the Hood School. And so that's gonna be happening, and I just, I wanted you to be aware, number one, that we had written another grant and got it, and that you, you know, it's, you're likely to see this shade structure, which I think is a very good idea, you know, likely being installed once all of the approvals have been sought. Just on a similar note, we also applied for, and were awarded through, through the, through my office, sunscreen dispensers that we're gonna install down here. They work almost like a hand sanitizer-type dispenser, and, but they're filled with, with sunscreen, which I think is a, is a, I saw some of the kids today, quite honestly, had participated yesterday, and, yeah, some of them were-
I was just gonna say, my daughter could've used it.
Yeah, I saw her-
Coming home, and she goes, "Mom, I got sunburn."
Yeah, so this would be something we'll have available down at the fields. I mean, we could probably use more, but we were awarded two.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
So down at the turf field.
I think so, yeah, yeah. And then the last thing I have for you is, I attached in your packet, too, a notice of a fundraiser coming up on May 17th at Fadruckas in Reading. This is for the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation of America, so as you know, we, we do a lot of these types of fundraisers with partner restaurants and such, where a portion of the proceeds raised on a particular night go to an identified cause, so that's what, that's what this is, on Wednesday, May 17th, and again, it's at the Reading Fadruckas from 5 to 8:00 PM, so 20% of the proceeds from your purchase would go to supporting the foundation, so I wanted to call that to your attention as well.
And I'll be there.
I bet you will. That's all I have. Thank you.
We have no correspondence at this time. Future business, May 15th at 6:30 is a regular meeting here. May 30, Tuesday, is, at 6:30, is a regular meeting at the little school, and June 5th at 6:30, town meeting in the Performing Arts Center. There'll be a pre-meeting in the superintendent's conference room. And that is our agenda. A motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, Mr. Bowers, I'll just ask for members if they had any words for you at your last, your last meeting, before you leave. Julie?
Yes. So Cliff, I wanna thank you for your nine years of service here on the school committee. You served as a great mentor. I appreciate the work that you've done with the suburban coalition. You were kind of the person who was the cheerleader, who represented us and our thoughts about the $2 billion that the state is shortchanging us, and I wish you continued relaxation in your retirement now from here.
You won't retire long. You'll be back. You'll be bored.
I'll be bored.
No, not Cliff, he's got plenty to do.
No, but you have been very, very beneficial, not only just to us members, but the town in whole, the things that you've brought to the school committee and countless things that you've put forth. You're gonna be missed. Someone's gonna have big shoes to fill.
Well, Cliff, I've had the pleasure of serving with you for the last nine years, and just trying to jog down some, some words here to describe you, and I came up with considerate, thoughtful, fair, and every decision you made, you're an absolute gentleman throughout the process. You've always been able to listen to other people's ideas. I kind of try to learn from you about that myself, but you listen to everybody before you make a decision. You've been a tireless worker on behalf of the students here in North Reading, you really have, students and families, and like Julie said, the work that you've done with the coalition is above and beyond what you're really expected to do as a committee member. You've done great work on the policy subcommittee, which is a very, very tedious, tedious committee to work on, but you've done some fantastic work there, along with Julie and, and others, to, to update all of our policies and procedures. But, you know, where I really saw that you just, you were a leader, was with the secondary school building committee. You've been on that from day one. Your experience was invaluable in, in building these two schools. I'm sincerely glad your name is on both plaques because it belongs there, so it's, you've done a great job, and, and the budget, you've worked tirelessly to get every single dollar you can out of the town so that you could dedicate it to the school department, so I'm gonna miss you.
I'll miss coming here.
And I've got this to give to you from the committee. Why don't you open it?
Wow.
Look at that.
Don't drop it.
No, I'm, can you read?
Yes, I can. "In honor of your service to education of the W. Bowers, North Reading School Committee, 2008, 2017. Thank you very much."
Can I say something before, before the applause?
Yeah.
I, like, like what others have said, Cliff, I, I wanna thank you first and foremost for your personal support of me in both positions that I've held in the school district, as the high school principal and as the superintendent, but more importantly, I wanna thank you for your support of the children of this town. Those of us that have worked closest with you know how hard you have, have worked, and how much time you dedicated, and how much thought you gave to doing the right thing for children. We saw it behind the scenes, a good number of people saw it out in front, but I think your, your contributions to, to the school district will be felt for a long time, and I really am deeply appreciative of that. I can't believe it's nine years. It seems like it went by awfully fast.
It was by quick.
It really does, but-
The only you get by, the faster it goes.
Well, I can, I can assure you that the impact will be felt for a lot longer than nine years, so thank you very, very much. I know you'll still be around, and I'm glad for that.
I'm not planning to leave the earth.
That's good, that's good. We look forward to that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I, actually, it, it does seem like it's a fairly short time, and I, I wish actually that I had been able to do it earlier, because I think that I, it would've been better to have been on longer. I'm leaving principally because I'm getting old. I really am. And I, I noticed it in particular, you know, you have this, this age thing where you see somebody, can't place their name, you know all about them, so it's not Alzheimer's, but you, you know all about them.
Yeah, but that was your wife, Cliff.
But you can't, you can't remember their name. And we had a hearing in here the, a week or so ago, a couple weeks ago.
Yep.
And I, I looked in the audience, I figured, you know, these people out here, they're gonna, certain ones are gonna, gonna raise their hand, wanna talk, and I'd like to, I know them all, so I'd like to address them by their, by their name, and not just, you know, it's like, "Hi Laurie," or, you know, whatever. And, and I, I went blank on like half a dozen of them, and I'm saying, "That's crazy," and I wrote them down. And, and then I, I knew their name. It came to me as we were going along. It just that, and I'm saying, saying, "I'm doing the right thing by leaving now while I still can remember their names." But it's been, it's been an interesting experience. I, I believe in education more than anybody, maybe more than you. Education is, is really what, what makes the world go around, and we do a very, very good job in this town, and I'm very proud of that. I'm very pleased that I was able to be a part of, of this, and for the, for the growth that has occurred over the nine years. And when I, when I first ran, it was because we were in a finite, financial disaster. We had closed things down on Wednesday afternoon, and I said, "That's, that's crazy. There's got to be some way to make the system more efficient." And so I ran, and I came in, I sat down with Colin Nelson, and he, and I, I kept hitting We had closed things down on Wednesday afternoon, and I said, "That's, that's crazy. There's got to be some way to make the system more efficient." And so I ran, and I came in, I sat down with Colin Nelson, and he, and I kept hitting him with questions, and he answered them. And I realized that we ran a very efficient shop, that it wasn't a, we're going to spend all the revenue we can get, as that letter in the newspaper this week irritated me particularly. You can tell it did. We don't just spend all the revenue we can get, you know, and, and we just spend up to that. It's that that, that revenue presses down on what we can do. And it's unfortunate, again, I've, I've been beating my head against the wall, I think, for the last nine years with the, with the other funding agencies in the state. They, they shortchange us, they, they claim they have, you know, a problem with finances as well, there's no revenue at the state. I remember, I think it was my first year, writing a, a letter to, to the governor, and suggesting that he increased the, the sales tax by a penny, and dedicated all to schools and distributed completely on the basis of per capita, per student. None of the formula stuff, just per capita. And that, that would be a tolerable thing. Well, sure enough, the next year, he raised it a penny and a quarter, and we never saw any of it. So I decided maybe I keep my mouth shut on that one. But I've worked through the North Shore Coalition of School Funding, Stand for Children, the Suburban Coalition, and, and through MASC, and each one of them goes and fights like crazy for state funding, and we still end up by not coming out of it. And you, you were at the meeting when I suggested Alice Peisch, the, the education person that, that the state runs the House Committee on, on Education. And I, we were talking about implementation of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, and they said, "Well, you know, you're, we're short, we're not doing enough." And we, and they finished the study at just the right time, so that they couldn't do anything with it that year. And then they were going to do it, take care, take it up the next year, but they weren't going to fund it that year. And they don't understand, we can't wait another year. When you eliminate music in the first grade, in the second grade, in the third grade, in the fourth grade, one year, you have four years of kids that go through the system without music. And, and that, that just, it rips your heart out. It's, you know, that, that's a, that's a real problem for me. So anyway, I, that, I've, I've, I look back on it, and, you know, it's been a fair amount of effort, but it seemed like the right thing to do. And, no.
That's mine. Mr. Governor.
Phone doesn't shut off the way I like it to shut off, but it happens with new phones. So I appreciate all of the, the kind words that have come here, and I have said that if these guys, the, the do people that come in in the next couple of years don't do the right thing, then I'll come back out of retirement. I remember everybody's name, but at least I'll do the right thing. Thank you all, and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
I'm going to motion to...
Oh, that's right, move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.